Good evening, everyone. My apologies for the delay. I just need to get the light frame going. Hold on one second. There he is going. And yes, I hear you. All right, we are. And once again, my apologies for the delay calling to order at 6:08. We could please stand for the.
United States of America. Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with equal justice.
Okay, thank you. This is a special meeting. We only have the one item on the agenda, and that is basically to potentially set a date for a special town meeting based on the petition that was filed last Friday afternoon. So. Just turn the agenda up here. Now you have received the petition, so you are aware that there are over 20 names on it. And.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for sending that.
First of all, can I just inquire, because there's, if I can explain what you need to decide tonight? So the question on the petition is the request to, for the selectmen to warn a special town meeting. Now, I would say, under Connecticut General Statute 7-1, the selectmen are obligated, shall warn a special town meeting upon a properly filed petition of at least 20 qualified voters. So, you know, I believe it's been determined that the requisite number of voters signed the petition. So, so, under the case law, you're not obligated to warn a special town meeting for any reason or any purpose. The reason must fall within the jurisdiction of the town meeting. Okay? And so the question is, is it within the jurisdiction of the town meeting to hire the municipal department head? I would say that's really the question. So I think in the first instance, it's a petition that was filed by the proper number of requisite qualified voters. It's asking for you to warn a special town meeting, I believe, the exact language, but I believe.
Oh, you want the.
Well, just, yeah, let me just. The request is to postpone the hiring of the P and R director until the end of the independent investigation, and the OCA's results of its report have become public. So. So the question is, does the town meeting have jurisdiction over the hiring of municipal department heads? And I would say, generally speaking. Let me just blow out my notes here. Generally speaking, the town meeting, which is the primary legislative body of this town, does have the authority in the hiring and firing of municipal department heads. However, I had a question. What has been the practice in this town? Because the courts have said, in matters primarily concerning local issues, it's a matter of local concern. So you'd say, how has this town operated? Has issues like this gone to the town meeting? Or has the hiring and firing been dealt with by this body or another body at the, well, I'll say, the administrative level? Because it's not, I think, when I looked at the town code, I did not see any, what I'll call, delegation of authority from the town meeting, specific, with the exception of the position of a zoning and sanitary officer pursuant to Section 95 of the Town Code. I did not see any specific code section that delegated the authority from the town meeting to. So I'd just like to know, for historical purposes, where has it been dealt with? Has it been dealt with here or at the town meeting level?
The department heads have never been appointed by the meeting.
Okay, because the, there is, so I'm gonna just give you what I found, and then you can make your decision based upon. Again, it's a matter of local concern. There's no statute or ordinance that's going to address this specific, unfortunately. So you have to decide, is this a matter that falls within the jurisdiction of the town meeting? That's the question. And if, historically, it's been not dealt with there, the administration, so, under Section 7-12 of the Connecticut General Statutes, this body acts as the superintendence of the town. And I believe it's 7-13, the first selectman operates as the chief administrative officer of the town. Generally speaking, the day-to-day affairs of the town is administered at this level for which you were elected. However, in a town meeting form of government, the town meeting does have authority to take certain actions. Generally, those actions are budgetary, and issues like hiring and policy are done at this level. So the question that you must deliberate and decide is whether or not you believe this issue should be referred to the town meeting because you feel it falls within their jurisdiction, or whether the historical practice of dealing with it administratively at this level has been a delegation through their omission. So that's the question. And there's no, there's no case that's gonna give us the answer specific, because it's a matter of local concern. You operate in a legislative capacity when the town meeting, you know, doesn't. So that's where we are. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Okay, so I was wondering, it sounds like you did a lot of research on this question, and I was just wondering what prompted you to do that much research on the issue?
Well, because I knew the question was going to be asked whether or not, or I anticipated the question of whether or not you were obligated to warn a special town meeting. So I wanted to be able to answer that question as best as I could, and that prompted me to.
Did anyone ask you if we were obligated?
Did anyone ask me? No.
Okay.
In fact, the first select woman called me, I think it was about 5:00, 4:30, 5 o'clock, and I told her I was in the middle of researching something in preparation of the meeting and didn't have time to speak.
Okay, and I was wondering if you're familiar with this case, Morris versus.
Yes, well, I'm familiar with the T D Center. I read it today.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know, since you're an attorney, Mike is Westlaw, you might.
I do, yeah.
Yes, you might understand the new AI associate that we have. So I've asked a number of questions of my AI associate.
That's what I do every day.
Generally speaking, I might even have a list of my questions asked here. I ask questions like, does a town meeting or municipality have authority over the hiring of? Is the Board of Selectmen of the municipality operating in a town meeting form of government obligated to warn a special town meeting under the petition of 25? And.
Right, good questions.
So, you know, and so, of course, I wanted to be as informed as I could in anticipation of having questions.
Okay, well, those are good questions.
Yeah, so.
So what did you think of this Morris versus Cong, Congdon?
Yes, so, you know, and again, as you know, it comes up with a yellow flag, which make, which means be cautious. But when I looked at it, you know, I said it's a.
But it is good.
It has not been overturned.
Right.
Yes, and so when I looked at that, I said, you know, generally speaking, your town meeting is your preeminent body of legislative authority.
Right.
And so you gotta start there. And then you have to say, from the court's, the court's perspective, and it's unfortunate, in this town, you don't have a charter, and you don't have ordinances specifically addressing the issue. Delegation of authority tends to come from the ultimate preeminent authority down. So who has the authority here? This body operates as superintendent of the town when the town meeting is not in session. Essentially, you're like the board of directors of the town meeting. You don't have, you both don't have parallel authority. And in the absence of an ordinance of delegation, you can operate and you can exercise that authority where there's silence by the town meeting. So that's why I asked the question, how has it been done historically, just to know the, I don't know the answer.
I don't know if that's a controlling question, though, because the town, not having a charter in Bethany, whether you think it's fortunate or unfortunate, gives the power to the residents of Bethany. So, so the Board of Selectmen are put in place to handle everyday sorts of questions, like the paving and the easements and stuff like that, but the ultimate power lies with the people who live here. So, so whether or not it's a new question, or whether or not it's something that was handled one way or another, that town residents have authority to speak on the issue.
Except, except when that has either been delegated through action or inaction. And I mean, that's what the case has said.
Well, what does the Morris case say?
It says that it's, unless otherwise delegated, it is, you start with the preeminent, as I stated, which is the town meeting. I said, in this town, there's no question, the ultimate legislative authority is your town meeting.
Right.
And unless, and that's why I said, I'm unaware of any statute or ordinance that delegates the authority to this body, except depending upon, under 7-12, whether or not the superintendent of, since you act just as the superintendent of the town's business, whether or not that the hiring and firing would fall under the superintendent of the town meetings. Now, I will say, there are cases that say that the town meeting has authority over the establishment of municipal positions, and that I would think it would extend to the hiring and firing.
Right.
Right, so I'm not suggesting here that they don't have, the town meeting does not have the authority. What I'm suggesting here is that, in this town, based upon the way the town meeting has operated historically, and the way this body has operated, that may form the question. And it's just for you to, you to consider, not for me to decide.
Okay, I see the petition version.
I simply try to advise you based on the law and tell you what my thoughts are. This is a, you know, ultimately, the town, again, you start, the town meeting is the preeminent body.
Okay, so I just, there's a lot of people here today, and I just, for the sake of anyone who might be interested in the Morris case, the town of Morris, I don't know, this was like maybe 2004, 2005. They were similar to Bethany in that they had no town charter, or no other, basically, the town residents, like Bethany, are the ones who hold the power. And, and they, I forget the details, and I'll, I'm happy to give the case to anyone who wants to read it. They called for a special town meeting, a petition, you know, enough people signed it, they sent it to the clerk, and the Board of Selectmen refused to call a meeting, saying it's not appropriate for town residents to weigh in on the issue of who's hired or fired. I think the question in that town was that there was a position that they wanted, people in town wanted to be eliminated. And the Board of Selectmen decided, I think unanimously, not to call a meeting, because they said, this is not an appropriate question for residents to decide. And so I believe the town residents filed some kind of enforcement action, and the Superior Court ruled in the, against the town residents. They appealed, the appellate court, I believe, ruled against the town residents. And then the Supreme Court in Connecticut said the town residents were right, that there needs to be a meeting, a town meeting, and a vote and order of the Board of Selectmen to, to call a town meeting.
Was that, just for clarification, was that specifically to hire a specific person?
No, it was to, it was to eliminate a position, but the, but the concepts were similar in that the question was, the Board of Selectmen's response was, town residents have no say in hiring, firing people.
Okay, because the specific question on this petition, and I'm just gonna read the first few words of it. Should the town of Bethany postpone the hiring of a, so, we're not talking about a specific person? I think they are talking about the process.
No, this, again, this is not an exact situation, but it's very similar to what's happening here, in that there was no specific person. The town, the town residents in Morris wanted to eliminate a position. It wasn't about a specific person. So, but, but you know, you're never gonna find a case that's exactly on point, and this one is as close as, you know, as we usually get. And so the question is, I think people have the right to be heard on the question. I think that this is a Connecticut Supreme Court case that hasn't been overturned. I don't see why, it's an appropriate question. I don't see why, you know, people could have a meeting and ask questions, there may or may not be a vote, and people can be heard. So I don't, I don't see a downside to that.
The name of that case.
I'll send it to you.
Yes, well, I have it right now. Morse v. Congdon, just for the minutes, it's Morse v. Congdon, C-O-N-G-D-O-N. It's a Connecticut Supreme Court decision that was issued on March 28, 2006, cited at 277 Con 565.
Yes.
Yes, and then the Morris is town of Morris.
Yes, it is. Could we attach it to the minutes from today, just so people?
That's why I'm asking for it to send it. Because it's being referred to multiple times.
Okay, because I think it'd be easier to just post it online than to have individual people.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
And what it is, will also have the petition included with the minutes as well.
Ben, do you agree with Gina's summarization of that case?
Well, yes, so ultimately, the town, the Supreme Court held in that situation that the, well, let me go right to the, because you gotta, factually, it's not identical. It's related to the hiring and firing of a town employee. This is a, an issue, the issue before you is not to eliminate or to create a municipal position. It's related to the process that is being employed by the authority that is overseeing the hiring. So it's, so it's a nuanced difference. Does the, you know, does the town meeting have the authority to establish a position or eliminate a position? I would say absolutely they do. Do they have the authority over the process? You know, it's a slightly different question, and I just wanna look at footnote 8. This, these, I'm sorry, footnote 7, which time meeting was sold during session.
And in that case, it was about whether to fill a position or hire a.
Whether to eliminate.
Whether to eliminate.
And the position was town planner.
And was the position, was somebody in the position or not?
You know, someone was in the position, someone was, and I think that was the real goal, was to not keep that person employed, but. I think it, right, but the stated purpose of the meeting was whether or not, was to discuss and vote on whether or not to eliminate the position altogether.
And why I'm asking for the custom, because what's important in that case, in Morse v. Congdon, in a earlier, 1903, Connecticut Supreme Court decision, Buck v. Barnes, 75, Con at 460, page 462, 1903. The Connecticut Supreme Court held that the statutory powers and duties of selectmen are confined to those in the general authority given to them under the prudential affairs, or to superintend the concerns of the town as defined by custom. So, you know, that's why I asked, again, I don't know what the historical practice is. So is it the custom of this community operate through their selectmen for these purposes, or through the town meeting? And so based upon Buck v. Barnes, while, I mean, again, there's no, there's no debate here, the town meeting is your ultimate legislative authority. The question is, are you obligated to warn a special town meeting? And you must only do so if it's for a legitimate purpose that falls within the jurisdiction of the town.
Correct.
Right, so I think we're all in agreement up to this point.
Yeah.
Now, the question for you all, is, is this an issue that falls within the jurisdiction of the town meeting? And the selectwoman is absolutely correct to refer to Morse v. Congdon. It's a, it's a valid decision that remains in effect, although it's been, there's a yellow flag on it, which means it's been discussed in.
A Superior Court judge had.
It's been discussed in ways that it's been distinguished. The issue here is distinguishable because the town meeting is not petitioning for a meeting to eliminate a position or to create a position. They want to become part of the, they want to address the process of hiring of an established position. And again, I don't know if we have an answer to the question, but what you can consider is the custom of how you operate as a community over time. Based upon the Morse v. Congdon decision that we're relying on here, which refers to Buck v. Barnes, that specifically says, as defined by custom. And then that cites us to something even older, Penny v. Brown, which is an 1891 decision, which says, long usages gives selectmen of town certain power. So long usages gives selectmen of town some. So if the town meeting has not engaged in this process over time, and it's gone to this body, then you might, it would be valid to consider in your decision. But ultimately, you both have, you three have to make the decision.
Thank you. I don't, I don't agree with every, I agree with a lot that you said, but not, I think that you're placing more value on custom than is. I think that the Morris four didn't, they didn't analyze whether or not the town residents had ever done this before. They didn't analyze how eliminated positions were established or eliminated. That wasn't the issue. And it's possible that this was the first time in Morris where the question about whether or not town residents had a say ever came up. That was not an issue that I remember reading in the case, the custom issue. If you want us to consider it, we can. I just don't, I don't, I don't think that, that it's, it was a fact in the Morris case, whether or not the town residents in Morris had ever done this before, or, you know, who had done it prior and previously. It wasn't an issue that the court considered. The court specifically said, you don't have a charter, and so the power lies with the people, and that's what the court said.
Well, right, I'm reading from the Morris case. So.
Okay, what page?
I'll tell you, page 418/19.
Okay.
Because the court says, this court has held that when a general power is given to a municipal officer, whatever is necessary for effective exercise of the power is in the absence of express authority conferred by implication. And that the court said in response to the court's discussion of Connecticut General Statute 7-12, which addresses the duties of this body. So.
Is this, are you reading here, one usage?
Well, the Buck v. Barnes, right, exactly. You know, but I will say, you know, the court, again, the Connecticut Supreme Court, when it comes to matters of municipal election and municipal powers, has been going back and forth. They also say, look to the delegation. You know, so, because you're acting as superintendent of the town or the administration based upon your powers that you have.
Okay, so in the paragraph you just pointed out to, it said that in Morris, the Board of Selectmen was involved in hiring and firing, and they still ruled that the town residents had the right to comment on this question. So I don't, I don't really understand the point about custom.
Well, because that's what the Connecticut Supreme Court said.
Okay.
You know, that's the Connecticut, that where, you know, you can look to custom, you know, the general authority given, selectmen are confined to those, the statute of powers and duties of the selectmen are confined to those involved in the general authority giving them to the order of the prudential affairs, or to superintend the concerns of the town as defined by custom. So I have not read the pity decision.
The what decision?
The pity.
Oh, okay.
I have not read it. But you know, in this case, in this case, in these, the circumstances before the body, the town meeting hasn't remained silent, there's been a petition, and they're asking a question. So it's not, the question is really, what a process. Do they have the authority over the process of hiring? Or just the elimination or establishment of the position? That, again, I have not researched that question.
So what's your opinion on that? What's your?
Well.
Paula, do you have an opinion on it?
I'm just waiting, I'm waiting to hear Bob, and I'm waiting to hear.
So generally speaking, I defer to, well, number one, is when it comes, where there's ambiguity, I always defer to the property owner rather than the government, because laws, laws are a degradation of property interests.
Right.
All right, and in town meeting form of governments, I always say, well, go to your town meeting, because they're the ultimate authority in your town. But that has to be balanced in the, against the need to govern and administer. Right, because theoretically, you could get a petition every single day and convene a, you know, if you, there's gotta be a balance.
I agree.
Right, there's gotta be a balance.
I agree.
So.
So what about the interference with town government of residents being upset if we vote against?
Someone's gonna be upset.
No, but I'm just saying, the time and the Boston heard with the mandamus, just like the people in Morris did.
Right.
And having to defend that, and.
You, you have to, that's why, that's why, you have to determine whether or not this is a legitimate purpose within their jurisdiction. And that's why, if you're going to go in a direction of not doing it, then you should state for these, for these minutes, the custom of the community over time. Because you'd have to rely on something, that you'd have to give a review in court, a reason.
Right.
Right, so obviously, this, and I told, it's my wife's birthday, and I said I'd be home in 10 minutes. So this is the way my life looks.
But the custom argument didn't work anymore.
No, I don't think I was raised, so.
I mean, but it wasn't, I don't know if it was raised or not, but the court talked about it.
So my, look, my initial recommendation, I think, when I texted with everyone, was scheduling the town meeting, right? I started looking into this, you know, I said, all right, no question. 20, the petition is 20 qualified voters. It's gotta be a legitimate purpose within the jurisdiction of town. I just assumed that I was gonna be questioned about this, so I started researching it, and I said, all right, well, does the town meeting have the jurisdiction? And as I looked into it, I said, okay, generally speaking, yes. But is the question one that is concerning the elimination or creation of a town department employee? The answer is no, it's about the hiring of. And so who ultimately did the hiring and the firing? Was it the town meeting, or was it the administration based upon a direction of the town meeting? And so because this is one of process, I think that is, it may be, you know, nuanced to the question. Because if the town meeting gets to, in a sense, govern over all aspects of municipal government, which maybe is, it's right. But that then would prevent a functioning government within the town, because it's just impossible to, you know, constantly have a town meeting and operate. So there's gotta be a balance, and.
I've hired and fired a number of people in the last five years.
So, you're right, and so.
I think that's an obvious part of your job, right? I think that's an obvious part of your job, right?
Well, that's, but I haven't had to go to a town meeting for the process of the hiring or the filing.
Right, because.
Part of administrative.
And that's, that's the question is, is there, if you're going to take a step back and err in the side of. Then you you refer to the town meeting. The problem in doing so is, you know, you're you're creating, you're setting a precedent. Of saying, if you get a petition. Are all issues that basically fall within the governance of the town? Because most of them fall within the legislative authority.
Right.
When what has been confined to questions of the town meeting in this town, which are generally one of ordinance approval. Budget approval, uh, and hiring and firing, and the the process associated. Tends to be more done at the administrative board. Because you operate as essentially the board of directors of the town meeting. So I'm going to say this is a question that can come out with two different answers. And very well may come down to custom, but I'm grateful that it's your decision.
The, um. The thought I had, um, not really on that point is, um. The second clause, the middle clause is. Concerned with the one with this. So until the Office of Child Advocates investigation results have been reported and made public. The first part about the Pullman and Conley independent investigation, we have every expectation that will be completed. And it's a contract with the firm, appropriations in place. When it will be completed, we don't know for sure, but that's not certain is every expectation. The third part, the thing about park and rec policies, procedures, protocols. Uh, I guess, I mean, that just gets into the wisdom of whether somebody should vote for this as written. Because you would think you'd want to bring the professional in to assist with that, but otherwise, I guess it's saying. We want the volunteer commissioners to write those things before they hire the profession. But that's, if that that gets into the wisdom of it, obviously, the job description has been completed, and it must have been. Publicly advertised, because that's how they got applicant.
Right, and they, and they didn't give us the draft, like we were told.
Well, now we got it, right.
Well, I mean, we didn't get a draft.
Supposed to.
Right.
They were supposed to.
I just want to make that point.
Yep, well, you're right. Um, but the middle part, Officer Child Advocate Investigation that we reported may public, I don't know anything about this, except maybe it was mentioned in a newspaper article. And we don't know whether the investigation. You know, if they, if they abandoned the investigation, will another report be issued, and do they make reports public? I don't know.
They have made other reports public, I don't know if they make every report.
So I mean, if if it is, if it's like the first part, if it's definitely going to be completed at some point and made public. Then it's something that will happen, or if it's just, you know, the. If 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 it's like, well, they investigated and decided not to proceed further, not to issue a report, or their practice is not to make them public. You you've created.
I know they've made other reports public, I don't know if they will make this one. I think that sometimes it's not clear whether they're investigating or not, and in this case, we know they are because they've subpoenaed us. But I don't know if that means that they're going to issue a report or not, I don't, I don't.
So it's a potential, it's a potential, but not a certainty.
That would, wouldn't that be something for the town meeting to, if the town meeting has the authority of jurisdiction, right? That would be something for them to consider in their action.
Right.
Like, we don't want, we're going to not act because we don't want to delay the hiring of a, in perpetuity.
Right.
You know, you know, and I, but I would point out.
And I I guess that gets into, again, the wisdom of conditioning something on something that may not occur.
Well, right, but that's why I I think it's important to say what is, falls within their jurisdiction. Because there's no question, under the Morris decision, the town meeting has the authority. Over the elimination and the creation of town meetings and arguably the hiring and the firing.
Arguably more than that, I mean, the court.
You know, the, you know, the court was specific in this case, you know. It's the town residents had the authority over the, uh, firing of the town plan. They, they, you know, they're, so there's no question. You know, this board, uh, exercising the authority as an agent of the town meeting. Which has affairs over town, uh, which which has power over town affairs. And again, the court concluded, town meeting has the primary authority to create or eliminate a municipal position. And the board is bound by the town meeting's exercise of their authority. This is not that question specific.
Right, but.
This is about the process.
But that court had a specific question to answer, and so they focused on that. The court said basically that town residents have the power and we are their agents. And so if we have the power to do something, then the town residents have that.
No, not necessarily, under seven dash one forty eight.
I mean. Indeed, history supports the conclusion that selectmen do not wield powers separate and distinct from.
Correct.
The town meeting, from the residents, but as acting as agents.
Correct, so now you look at the authorities, look at the town meeting's authority, it would fall under seven dash one forty eight.
Right.
The selectmen's authority would fall under seven dash twelve. And concurrent authority under seven one forty eight in the inaction of the town.
Okay.
Under seven dash twelve, you operate as superintendent of the town affairs. The administrators of the town affairs. Under seven dash one forty eight, and again, I, let me, let me take a quick look at the statute so that we're guessing. If the question falls, is the process of hiring one that is. Within the superintendent of the administration of the town affairs under seven dash twelve? Or is it within the authority under seven dash one forty eight? Let me just pull up the statute. It's a personnel. Falls under seven. Connecticut General Statute seven dash one forty eight. And that section provides, all right, so this is a very long section, so.
I don't think the answer is going to be.
No, well, well, but this is the authority.
I I know.
So it's provide for the establishment of a pension system, so the rights and benefits, established merit system. Provide for the employment of and prescribe salaries, comp, hours of employment. And duties not defined. Provide for the appointment of municipal historian. So it would be five C, which would be the closest thing, provide for the employment of. And prescribe the salaries, compensation, and hours of employment of all officers and employees of the municipality and the duties of such officers and employees. Not expressly defined by the Constitution of the State, the General Statutes, Charter, or Special Act. All right, so. Uh, that you'd look to for the town meeting, and then for the selectmen, you go to seven twelve. Seven twelve. Very vaguely provides, unless otherwise provided by law. Unless it's for selectmen, uh, duties of seven dash twelve, the selectmen of each town shall. I'm going to say dot, dot, dot. Superintend the concerns of the town. That's it, right, so what is that, what does that mean? To superintend the concerns of the town, and when we look. Under the statute, to just look at the cases that address this statute, see if there's anything that would be illustrative. Power to create or eliminate municipal positions is necessary, I'm committed to the power to superintend concerns of the town. That is two seventy, and so power to create, that's two seventy six, is that the Congress case, two seventy seven? Uh, yes, so it cites. So you have the authority when there's silence. Based on the case that I cited to the pity case, you can look to the custom. But this is, again, this is about the process of the hiring process, should the, should it be delayed? To an uncertain period of time to the future. That's, you know, it's it's about the process, it's not about whether or not to have a department head. So, uh, you have, if there, if it's a valid purpose, you must schedule that meeting. I believe it's within a twenty one days after receiving. So.
What what is the last available date with that?
I think it would be the thirtieth, thirtieth first, it's basically the end of the month, that's why. If you want to digest this, when's the, when you absolutely have to put something out?
I've got to get it to the printer by the end of this week, because I can't trust the postal service.
So you either can act tonight, or we can look into it deeper, I mean, it's not, I don't think we're going to find an answer that's going to be specific. I think ultimately it's going to come down to your decision.
Morris is pretty specific, I don't need time, do you guys need time?
No, based on, well, both of you agreed with the holding in that Morris case. So I think that's, of course, it's not exactly on point, but. Said it, said that the, if it were, if it were eliminate the position of Park and Rec Director, then it would be on point.
No question.
So this is limitation on the hiring. Um, again, I just have the concerns with that middle one being, you know, potentially, if there's no investigation results or they're never made public. It's not self correcting, you have to have another town meeting before anyone can hire a park and rec director. If if it passes, but maybe it gets into whether people should vote for them.
Right.
The question I think we're voting on tonight is, do we have a town meeting to address this petition?
Well, I, I think that, I think that we have to, um, and I appreciate the discussion about whether it's within the. You know, whether it's an appropriate topic.
Yeah, I just wanted to be informed that the, uh, town meeting, this is going to go to the town meeting as written. So the town meeting will have to vote on that one question, uh, since it's a special town meeting.
But people could amend it, I mean, anything could happen.
The special town meeting, this is the way it was handed in, this is the question.
During the town meeting, people can move to amend it.
No, it's a special town meeting, it cannot be amended.
That's, that's the issue.
It's a special town.
You can send you this question, you could send another question. But since it's a, at the annual town meeting, since it's a, that's a, like a, like a regular meeting. The distinction now we're getting into is FOIA and the difference between regular meetings and special meetings.
We can't amend our special Board of Selectmen meetings, we can't, this is going to be a special.
If you want other questions to be considered, you could add a question now. Because then it will go out with multiple questions, and for example. I'm going to just say, uh, shall the town of Bethany postpone the hiring of the P and R director until the independent investigation from the law firm Pullman Conley has been completed? Right, that could be another question, you could also say, shall the town meeting postpone the hiring until the OCA's investigation results? That's another question, so that you separate them out, so the town meeting is not in a position where it's confined to the one question. But now would be the time to address that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel comfortable amending something.
No, well, this question has to be.
Okay.
That's, there's no question, that has to be.
Yeah.
The question is, do you want to send more? This is your chance to do that. If you don't want to, that's fine too.
I mean, this is basically what was submitted, this is basically what is going to be put forward for that meeting.
That's what the people saw.
So this is what. And potentially because of, I have to work backwards from a date, and it has to be done within a twenty one day timeframe. On looking at that Wednesday, the twenty ninth, so that I can get it to the newspaper the Wednesday before. And then get it to the printer this Friday to be mailed to allow for at least ten days. Our town code says the minimum of five, but I do not trust the postal service, so I try to allow for at least ten. And even then, the postal service sometimes doesn't get it. Um, that's why we will, and we will put it up, obviously, on the town website, um, town Facebook page. Uh, we'll make sure that it's out on social media posted, um, just to make sure that it, that it's out there.
Can I, can I look at it again?
Sure.
I just want to.
But I have to look backwards. We have Board of Selectmen in the last seven minutes, so we do need to.
Four times.
I mean, Board of Finance, sorry. We are in Board of Selectmen.
I mean, I guess I would, I don't know, is it a motion or whatever to just the first two lines?
We can't change it.
No, I'm adding.
So your proposal is to add, to to, so the selectmen have the authority to send more questions? Like, like, if you had a business that you wanted to.
Oh, in addition to that question, she wants an additional question.
So item number one will be forwarded as presented. Item number two, uh, select woman is saying should be.
The first one.
Should the first two, well, would it go down to?
Just to hear completed.
Completed, okay, so the second question shall be what, to delay hiring until the independent investigation of the town is completed.
So we're dissecting, is basically what we're doing.
Not really, just copying the first part.
I mean, you're, you're still separating it out, the first one will be the original question, and then you're just separating it out, is what you're doing.
Does that, does that, do, does that make sense?
Yeah, should, should it be, um. Should it be, if if question, if question one is not passed, then you.
But then you go onto agenda, it'll be a second agenda, right, so you'll consider and act on the first agenda.
But if they, if they vote on the first one.
And they say, then, then in in effect, they don't have to, second becomes moot.
That's what I think, do you need any language in the beginning to say?
I think it just becomes moot, but if they.
It's repetitive, like if they vote, if they voted yes on one, they're going to vote yes on two, because. Yeah.
Yep. Well, I would, I would, I would suggest that it becomes moot at that point, and therefore action is not necessary.
Okay, then keep it simple, is it a Gina thing, just, uh. Just ended at, at completed.
So there'd be two questions, would you know, and then the the first section of the. Question and the second.
And just in case you're ever questioned, you don't want to do a third with the OCA? Because some people may be more passionate about that. Uh, I don't know, uh, I'm just.
You know.
It doesn't hurt to do it, it gives the people options, if you don't want to do it.
I mean, it's already in the first one.
What I initially recommended is, you present the question, present it, and then you dissect it into two separate questions. So if the first one is, is, is rejected, they have a choice between to question, keep it to the independent investigator. Or keep it to the OCA. You know, because they may reject one because of the OCA, which would mean, I would imagine, they would reject it on its own, but again, don't know.
But if the first one doesn't pass, then the other ones become a moot.
If the first one passes, then those two questions will become, if the first one fails, then you would go on to questions two and three.
Right.
Unless in your opinion, you don't want to put that out, because you don't think that's in the best interests, uh, but if they have jurisdiction.
Right.
Right, y- your obligation is only to send the question present.
Right.
You have no other obligation, but you have the ability to send additional if you want.
Should we make some motions, or a motion?
I I thought I did with the first one.
So the the motion then was to refer, to warrant a special town meeting for the purposes of. Purpose stated in the petition of at least twenty qualified voters. And to add to that warning, a second question that would, uh, state. Shall the town Bethany postpone the hiring of a park and rec director until the independent investigation from the law firm of Pullman Conley? Has been completed, period.
Is that your motion, Gina?
Sure, yeah.
Sure, yeah.
I'll second your motion.
Any other comments or questions?
Are you gonna vote?
I vote for. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Me. And the only reason I'm opposing is because past history has been, I've done the hiring and the firing of pretty much most of the staff that's here, other than elected officials. So I'm going off of past history, so I just want that on record.
I think we should include the, her rationale in the, in the minutes. I won't, okay, thank you.
Did you vote yes, Gina?
I did, yeah.
Now, the next, only other business is to adjourn.
The date, did we put the date in there?
Yeah, you, you mentioned the twenty nine.
Well, so why don't you?
You know, I, 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 I meant to ask if the thirtieth was okay, but we've already just done this whole thing on the twenty nine.
They have budget, they have budget work to us that night.
Okay, so the twenty nine is better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So can I make a motion, just so we have it on record?
Yeah.
A motion for the twenty ninth.
Motion to set the special time for, the motion to set the special time meeting for.
And looking at the attendance via Zoom, because we do not have the stuff hooked up yet, we're, we're in the process of the second phase of the gym, we are looking at potentially using the school, we've reached out to them to use their, their gym, we don't know if it's available yet. So um it will obviously be posted on the notice for the location, once people confirm where that is. But it will be an in-person meeting because there is a vote. So um it's for the uh best uh control of the meeting and the vote, uh it will be in person, but we will confirm the location once we um I mean, they're back from the school.
So it's either here or at the school.
Yeah, the location is to be determined, uh once we get confirmation on that, but it will be uh I've put in out a motion for Wednesday, the twenty ninth at seven P M.
Okay, and in school gym, if, if possible, because of the higher.
Capacity, right. Right, so, but as long as we can have the fire marshal or whatever here with body capacity, I think we did that once before, so.
And I suppose for these types of meetings, there's no easy way to vote remotely.
It's, it makes it very difficult to to verify people, so it's.
Maybe, maybe something we could talk about at some point, just to brainstorm.
Yeah, yeah, so, um and I I made a motion for that date and time, we will, we will confirm the location. Uh may I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ananamous, okay, fantastic. Um I know finance is standing at the door waiting for their meeting. Uh may I have a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Second, all in favor, aye. Thank you, everyone who attended.
Time please.
Enjoy the rest of their evening.
Time, please.
Uh seven, seven on, on the dot, actually.